Okay, everyone, I think we're gonna call the meeting to order, please, so we can start with the Fudge of Allegiance. Thank you. Being mindful of the microphone's distance from my mouth, I will ask if everyone filled out the attendance form so far, who is here? Thank you. And with that, we are actually going to make a motion right now to move to go into executive session. So I'm gonna make that motion now. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Great. Thank you. Rhiannon seconded. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Good. So we are gonna ask our board and Elizabeth and Jean to please join us in an executive session. We will be back. All right, we are now calling the meeting back to order. Do I need a vote to do that? Yes, okay. Okay, a motion to restart the meeting. May I get a second? Hello, hello. Can you hear me? It doesn't happen that way, Jean. It's too organized, but everyone has signed the attendance. If you have anyone, everyone looked at the minutes and if you haven't, we can, okay. Yeah. It looked, they looked okay to me. The one thing I was curious about was, Has it really been since 2020 that we've been working on this fire?
Yes.
I thought that was a typo.
No.
I believe it, but I was like, Yeah. I believe, yeah.
Anyways, the storyline is the building has been obtained, but they need to, Thank you, Lucille. The, 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 the reality is this had, this project has taken an inordinate amount of time for a variety of reasons. The most recent scenario is that the building department has an extraordinary amount of work to do and obtaining this permit has taken time. And once it was obtained, they weren't able for over a month to actually get confirmation that it was approved other than the prior verbal. So I, I think they're going to be starting in the very near future. And thank you for your patience. We're all anxious to see this move.
No problem. Thank you. And I guess, I don't know, everyone was in favor of restarting the meeting, right? We never got to that part, but yes. Okay, so we voted to start the meeting and we have started the meeting. So then I think the next course of action is to approve these minutes. Does anyone have any questions beyond my comment? Then can I make a motion, please, to approve the minutes from the July 20th meeting? I mean, can, yes, I made it. And can I get a second? Corey seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? No, then the July 20th, 2023 minutes are approved. Thank you. And now we will move on to our regular business, starting with the president's report. Well, we, I just wanted to mention very quickly, we had a lovely, there was a legislative, a thank you to the legislators breakfast on,
Tuesday.
Oh.
Do I report? I don't mind.
We didn't have it on here because Tom said you weren't gonna be here.
I thought you were gonna be at that Rotary event.
At where?
The Rotary Walk at Glen Island?
No, no, I didn't.
We're just being, we're just being super rapid.
Because of this meeting.
Yeah, then please do your, do your, do the WLs report, Frances. Then we'll just add that into the agenda at the top.
Okay.
So we'll modify.
I didn't want to create any.
No worries. Go ahead.
Yeah, it might have been my problem. I didn't let you know that I was not going. Anyway, okay. The WLs board is still in recess. We worked so hard during the year, so we needed these two months to rest. We will have our next meeting next month. I just want to report on one thing. That last Tuesday morning, there was a wonderful and extremely productive breakfast meeting with the county and local state legislators and was held at the WLs conference room in Amesford. This is an annual event which is extremely, extremely useful to connect with our supporters and legislators. The meeting was organized by the WLs, particularly the executive director. And it was attended by, of course, all the, the local legislators, state and county. Was also attended by some members of the WLs trustees, not all, and library directors. And of course, the executive director and many of his, several of his senior staff. New Rochelle was very heavily represented by the chair representing the board and our library director. And of course, yes, truly, you were there. So and a number of issues came up that I just wanted to bring to your attention. One is that there was an overall strong and renewed support for the library as an institution, as a hub for the community. That needed to be supported at all costs. Gone are the days when the library was a place where you went to borrow books and then return books. It has now become a center for community activities. And also gone were the days when when you walk into the library and it's as if you walked into a church, you're just with the silence. Now you're lucky if you don't hear somebody saying. But yes, there was a strong support for, for the library as an institution and that this should be continued. Secondly, there was a strong support for increase or at least to maintain and increase financial support for the libraries, especially funds from the county and the state and other private sources. The legislators assured us that they're going to do their part and ensure that funding from the state and the counties were forthcoming and to try to resist as much as possible any cuts that, that might be planned. And also they encourage our side, the directors and the trustees, to be open with them, to approach them on any issues that would come up, any support that they needed, so that the necessary financial support and other kind of support is flowing steadily to the libraries, given its importance to the community. The third issue was that we were asked to be on guard, be on the lookout for any issues that might tend to undermine the vitality of the institution or the libraries and the effectiveness of its staff. This is not so much an issue in our area yet, but it is beginning to develop in other parts of the country, but particularly talking about talking about book burning and things like that. So as I said, this is not yet an issue in this area, but it came up and that means the legislators and the people who were at the meeting were aware that this is an issue in the horizon that we need to be on guard and prepare for the days when it comes. There was also a determination that any issues that are pending with the legislators should should be addressed as soon as possible. A case in point is the, is the the civil service reform. And that's an issue that has been going on, I think, for the last two or three years, quite affecting the recruitment of staff and the and the proper functioning of some libraries. The legislators agreed with that. They accepted our point of view and say that they were going to be seized with this matter for as long as as possible and they would like to see a speedy resolution. I, I think that was briefly the, the substance of the meeting. It was a very useful, pleasant, wonderful breakfast meeting. And I did contact Terry to thank him for arranging it. And I said, although Scramble Leg and Toast was not at the breakfast, I forgive him for that.
Thank you. Yes, it was wonderful. Tom and I went and Frances went and it was really great to hear from our legislators and hear the fervor of their support for libraries and overall recognition of their importance as anchor institutions within our communities. So that's all I was gonna just mention as well, so I will pass it on to Tom for the director's report.
Thank you, Whitney. I really don't have a, a, a report that will entail a lot of time other than the fact that our library this summer has been extraordinarily busy. Our reading challenge numbers are up almost 800 in terms of participants. Last year, it topped at 600. So we're seeing more, more, more young people participating for our children, for our teens. Last year, we had 35. This year, we have over 80. So it's, we, we've had great programs both here and at Huguenot Children's Library for our children, for our teens. We've had wonderful adult programs. In the context of seeing the library as an active institution in a post-pandemic world, it really took some time for our library to really come back and for our patrons, our residents to feel comfortable. And we really are seeing a very busy building now with all sorts of things going on. And it's exciting. The staff is energized and, and the community seems to be too. That's it.
Thank you. So we're, like we have discussed, keeping tonight's meeting short. We don't have committee reports. We don't have much else besides the very important discussion and motions to vote on the New York State Library Construction Grant Request. So we're gonna proceed with that unless anyone has any comments or thoughts. Tom? How do you want to do it? Do you want me to ask for all the motions?
Right. Do you, do you want, I just want to remind people very briefly that there are two grants that we are applying for. As, as we do every year, we're allowed to apply for a grant for the main library and also for our Huguenot Children's Library. And we very strongly believe in accessing these funds. We've been successful every year since we began. And now we're well over $2 million in terms of state construction grants in the last 15-plus years, which is by far the most grant money that any library in the county has received. And it has allowed us to to improve and enhance and rebuild both facilities. And it's exciting. So tonight, it's just sort of part of a, part of a process that we've been engaged in for many, many years. And the formula typically is we identify a project here at Maine and at the Huguenot Children's Library. We then apply for grants that will allow us, hopefully, we're lucky, to receive 75% of the project costs. The remaining 25% will be covered and has been covered by our foundation for both buildings. So we've been very, very lucky. So we are going to go forward with two grants as well. But before I share a little bit about both grants, I just want to publicly proclaim my gratitude for the team that really put this together this year, and that is Susan Moorhead, who's our children's librarian at HCL, Kira Ayello, who's our adult services librarian, Elizabeth Joseph, our assistant director, and as always, Jean, who is at the helm inputting all this information, which is not an, not an easy thing, gathering the documents and submitting it. So without those four, the, you know, the firs and foursome, we wouldn't be where we are. So they, I just want to tell you all how grateful I am for everybody that worked hard. Just very briefly at, and I've sent a description of the grants that we are embarking on at the Huguenot Children's Library. We have two restrooms that were created in about 25 years ago, and they truly have not been improved in any real sense since that time. And we felt that we needed to address these bathrooms, make them more attractive, make them more ADA compliant, and really make them family restrooms where there'll be, you know, a commode and a urinal. And, you know, it will just be a far more attractive space and a safer space for people using it. And to that, the project cost for the restrooms will be a total of $64,000. Our grant request, 75% of that amount is $48,000. Our, if we're successful, our match will be $16,000. And again, that $16,000 will be furnished by our foundation. The what?
You don't have that information.
Oh, the, 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 the grant amounts. I could, I could, that just was made available to me, but we, I can share that with you.
Can you just, can you read it again?
Yep. The total grant amount for the Huguenot Children's Library is $64,000. The grant amount is $48,000 and the match from the foundation is $16,000.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
You said they're family restrooms, so they're gender neutral?
They are gender neutral. Yeah. So, so that is our, so that is our Huguenot Children's Library project. Our main library project is, it's really almost essentially two projects tied together. The first element is a, a completion, a, a, a finishing, if you will, of the noise abatement project that we started with our grant last August. We had hoped to be able to entirely refashion the library in terms of noise abatement. Unfortunately, our grant amount wasn't as much as we thought, so we decided to prune a few areas from this, from that grant. And our decision was to to reapply this year for the two areas that were not, that had to be eliminated. And the two areas are, one is if you have been on our second floor in the area where the Handelman Business Center, the Help Center tables, there's an atrium space that opens into the third floor. It tends to get noisy there. And so our staff, namely Kira Ayello, with an assist from Elizabeth, have worked with the vendor that we're working with Phase One to create strategies to make that space less noisy. And so the first element is to take that atrium space in the second floor and, and find ways to, to abate the noise that emanates from that space. And the, the second area that we are working on in terms of the noise abatement is the area that relates to our large central staircase. You know, when you enter the library, you see the staircase right in the middle and it leads you from the first floor up to the third floor. That's an area that also has an atrium space in the top. It gets very, very loud there. We, Takeform has created solutions to make that space less noisy. So that's the, that's the first part. And the second part is something that we think is essential. As you folks know, we've been lucky enough to be able to refashion our library. We have repurposed it and updated it and it's lovely. But we really have not yet addressed wayfinding signage. And it's, this library is not intuitive. It's three floors. It's over 60,000 square feet. And we think since we've reached the point where, um, where, where, we're ready for people to be able to find things without finding it, you know, getting lost or having to ask people. Of course, we're always available to assist. So this project, the signage and wayfinding project is, is something that we think is really essential. And one of the key elements is that the system that we install, if we're lucky enough to get this grant, will be a system that will be flexible and can be fixed because even though here and now we've done many things, the libraries are always in a process of evolving and changing and moving collections and functions, et cetera. And so to that, and Kira and Elizabeth have been working very hard with Takeform in terms of a signage solution. And so that will be our next element, the second half of that main library project, which will, again, to provide signage on the floors, identify collections, identify areas, and also provide actual wayfinding tools so that when people walk into the library or at any floor or near an elevator, if they're looking for something and they're just not sure what it is, the Spanish collection on the second floor, you know, the, the audiobooks on the first floor, there'll, there'll be something that will guide them to find it. And so the cost of that, let me get to that, is the total cost for both elements of that project is $144,692. The grant portion, 75% of that is $108,519. The match, the final 25% would be $36,173. And I'm happy to repeat that.
The grant cost is what you're applying for or what you've already received or been guaranteed? This is what you're applying?
This is what we're applying for.
Okay.
Right. And it's due in later August. And, you know, Jean is well underway with information as furnished by our team.
Okay. There's no, but there isn't a guarantee that you're getting the full amount.
No.
But that's what we're.
That's what we're hoping for. Some years, we have been incredibly successful. When we did the the third floor, we applied for a grant of $363,000. We got it all. It was great. But not every year we're lucky enough. It depends upon the other libraries that are also applying for grants and how the committee, which is an ad hoc committee of library directors in the county that are not applying for a grant, how they evaluate the applications.
May I ask, so just, just help me out.
Sure.
Why not apply for the full amount? Is it a requirement that we can only apply for 75%?
It is. And actually, New Rochelle, because it's considered as defined by the state economically disadvantage, we are able to receive a 75% funding, which is maximum. Many other libraries in the county can only hope to receive 50% of funding, half of the funding. So works for advantage. Early on, when we first started, that, that, that rule was not in place, but they did amend it. It really made it easier for us to be successful with these larger projects.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So that means the next order of business is a series of motions to approve various facets of the application process? And, yes?
I'm so sorry, Whitney. I do have one last question. Tom, with this, is it electronic? Is this system electronic?
The signage?
Yes.
Some of it may be electronic, but other, other elements might be just, you know, will be made of a material that we can change.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, that makes sense.
I mean, quite frankly, one of the projects that we're looking at in the future through a foundation grant is our electronic signage that fronts onto Memorial Highway. It's over a dozen years old. And so we're really hoping, Daniel and I had a meeting yesterday to talk about the possibility of, of, of looking to replace this system with a more up-to-date system, make it maybe a little more exciting where, you know, you might be able to see video and, and just make it more attractive. But, you know, I, I in terms of the specifics, I would defer to Kira and Elizabeth in terms of where we think we're going, because they really have been the people that have been managing it very nicely. Elizabeth, do you, is there anything you might want to say about what, Kala? Right. If, you know, there's a system that we have that you've seen the flat screens that are scattered throughout the library that actually do provide some of that.
And it'll all be accessible and, right? And that's really critical. Excellent. Sorry, okay.
Oh, yeah. Just, just a little addendum to what I said earlier about the breakfast meeting. I had the opportunity during the meeting to have my small talks with a number of legislators. And one of the things I tried to bring across is that while we support their, while we applaud their support for financial assistance and so on, I think it would be useful, and they know that, to come out to the libraries and see what, what is being done with the funds that they provide. And a case in point is what is happening on our, in our library here on this third floor and so forth. And I think that would give them a sense of appreciation that they're fighting a good fight in, in Albany and, and, and White Plains. And I think they agree to that.
Excellent. Great. So we, we're gonna lose Rhiannon pretty soon. She needs to, to, to be off, so we're trying to keep her in for these votes. So we're just gonna try to get through them. And so do you want me just to, to read through and then we can record the motions? So I'm just gonna read what we have here, then I will make motions and then we'll ask for a second and then we will, we will vote on them and this will get recorded and then Jean will have it forever. She'll put it up on her refrigerator. Relative to our upcoming fiscal year 2022, 2023, New York State Library Construction Grant Application for Funding Support and the Replacement of the Main Library, New Rochelle Public Library Noise Abatement Phase Two slash Signage and Wayfinding Project. These are the following actions. So I will make a motion to agree that we, that we of the board agree to the assurances as stipulated by the New York State Education Department in relation to the New York State Library Construction Grant Applications for the Main Library, New Rochelle Public Library Noise Abatement Project, meaning we're gonna apply. So can I get a second? Tatiana seconded.
Did you second?
Okay. Tatiana. Okay, thank you. And can, can I get everybody to? Is that, who approves? Does everyone approve? Yes? I, I thank you. And any abstentions? Any opposed? Thank you. That motion passes. The second motion I will make is to submit the smart, that I would like to make a motion that we agree to submit the Smart Growth Impact Statement as required by the New York State Education Department in relation to the New York State Library Construction Grant Applications for the Main Library, New Rochelle Public Library Noise Abatement Project. May I get a second? Do you understand what that means?
This, why does it sound like a repeated verse?
It's different. This is about the Smart Growth Impact Statement. They're not the same.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Kala. All in favor? Any opposed? Great. Thank you very much. That is Kala. Okay, they are all, sound similar, but they're not all the same. And actually, they, they do repeat for each of these, but there's only two. So there's four for each. So there's eight total and I'm on number four. I will make another motion to declare that the Main Library, New Rochelle Public Library Noise Abatement Project qualifies as State Environmental Quality Review Act or SECPRA Type II Actions, thus qualifying, sorry, classifying the proposed restorations and use of the above land as requiring no further review under SECPRA and its implementing regulations. Meaning it's not on new land. It doesn't impact the environment. It's already part of the current building. And that means that we're not having to conduct environmental review process because it's already classified under the Type II, which means it doesn't need it. So if everyone understands it's always under the city, then I will ask for a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
That was Lucille.
I, Lucille, I made that second. I'm writing it down and I'll hand it to her. But thank you, Lucille. Great. I am moving on now to the HCL restroom and it's the same series, sequence, okay? So you will hear repetition, but it's for a different grant. Relative to our upcoming fiscal year 2022, 2023, New York State Library Construction Grant, Huguenot Children's Library Restroom Improvements Project. The following action was taken. The, then the action is that I will make a motion to agree to the assurances as stipulated by the New York State Education Department in relation to the New York State Library Construction Grant Applications for the Huguenot Children's Library Improvements Project. May I get a second? I'll second. Thank you, Rhiannon. All in favor? Aye, great. Thank you. And then I will make a motion to submit, here we go again, the Smart Growth Impact Statement as required by the New York State Education Department in relation to the New York State Library Construction Grant Applications for the Huguenot For the Huguenot Children's Library Improvements Project. May I get a second? That was Corey. Thank you. Okay, all in favor? Great, um, and I think this is, this is the last one. I will make a motion. Almost done. I'd like to make a motion to declare that the Huguenot Children's Library Improvements Project qualifies. As State Environmental Quality Review Act or SECPRA Type II Actions. Same reasoning, thus classifying the proposed restorations and use of the above land as requiring no further review under SECPRA. And its implementing regulations. May I get a second? A second back. All in favor? Hi, hi, any opposed? No, great, we got all of these motions passed. Thank you so much. I did it. Yeah, I signed it. All set. This, this is the same, um, set of documentation. Um, I can give you my, um, document. We can cross-reference, Jean, if you want to do. So, um, having conducted that important business, thank you, Rhiannon. Um, we, we come now, anyone have any questions about what just happened? I know it was a flurry, good. Um, then brings us to our public discussion. Did we have any public to be heard? No? Okay. Good luck, Rhiannon. Um, that's it, okay? So then with that, I will make a motion to adjourn. Okay, any opposed? Nay. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Happy August.